We'll call the order of the regular school board meetings. Regular school board meeting for October of 2021. The mission of the Solon Community School District is to engage each and every student in rigorous and relevant learning experiences, maximize achievements, or exceptional teaching. Chris, can you call the roll?
Yeah. Here, Jessica.
Here.
Was that?
Here.
Boons.
Here.
Brown.
Is here.
All present.
Nice work, Earl. Thanks for making the trek for the board meeting. First, you don't have any public comment?
No public comments. We just have one speaker, but that's only agenda.
Okay. I thought maybe Mr. Sands wanted to talk about it.
So yeah, they got to check it.
Celebrations and achievement. Davis?
Yeah, we want to take this time to honor Rick's service as a outgoing board member. I have a few things I'd just like to comment on. As far as your time here, Rick, eight years term you served, and during that time, I know we can all, as part of a board team, we greatly improved and expanded the facilities, forty-three million dollars worth in the last six years. New middle school, Center for the Arts, the West Wing on the high school, the intermediate building. And then helped us with planning for future and growth. I know with the new settlement, the new development coming in, we're in good shape as that gets started to absorb that. Financially, over that time, we've maintained a consistent tax rate, I think four consecutive years, same tax rate. We remain very solvent financially. School improvement with our strategic plan and growth under strategic plan during your time. Our average student ACT score has climbed to twenty-four with the state average of twenty-one point six. And of course, our proficiency rates on the Iowa assessments are top tier in Iowa. Part of a board team that added mental health to our strategic plan, ensuring that we continue that focus on a safe environment and a sense of belonging for all of our students. And then again, I think something that I learned a lot was just as a member of this board team, being a valuable part of this board team that collectively learned together, grew together, and led the district to new heights together. So, thank you.
I did contact the other board members and ask them to come up with three things to roast. So, yeah, and this lovely crop is for you as well for your new home.
Don't break it.
But so we kind of go around and.
Jamie, you can say any, any.
I just, I've only served for two years here, so, and it's been a very interesting two years. And I appreciate that every meeting, every smile, and every attitude. And you always have super insightful questions to ask and inputs to put in and all of that. We have the facilities putting a beautiful, like, for me, on that, we will add up some things that I need still. So, I'll be from like that, at least two years.
Dan?
You know, you said Chris, we had the old Halloween district. More about the middle school and having relationships, you mean, what it means, and just having that relationship with Solon. That just kind of goes into the, which, which is information, and just again, you know, really helping us as we build that autonomy, really connect with the arts and make sure they got what they need. And I just appreciate that. You know, we've been high down those times, sometimes not, but we always work through that, and I just appreciate that.
Thanks. Pam?
Yeah, I don't think this town, the facilities, what you guys did, you were, yeah, Jim and even Davis, you guys worked as a team on that. This town will never understand how much time and effort you guys put into that and saved a lot of taxpayer dollars. I'll always be thankful for that. Again, when I came on the board, you were awesome help. You're a great mentor. You know, I appreciate everything you brought to this board and having four kids in the district. Thank, again, I, you are going to be this. I gotta tell a story from Iowa School Board Association, our convention. Because everybody's got to hear this story. So we go down and usually there's a big convention, right? And you can take a bunch of trinkets and stuff in a goodie bag. Jim was notorious for, and pens. They've got all kinds of stuff in there that you can take. They want you to, you know, grab the stuff. So these guys have bags and they were there earlier. And I get to like the afternoon session and we go walking through and all of a sudden we get to like the Iowa High School Flight Association. And they got balls and basketballs, footballs from state tournaments all around. And I start talking to a couple of guys that I know at the table and Rick and Jim go in the back and just start squirting, just taking bags, the balls and all this stuff. And I'm hearing a little bit of conversation. I'm like, these guys are ripping off Iowa High School sport, Iowa High School Flight Association, they're taking all this stuff. And the look on my face was like panicked. I'm like, who are these guys? And they're like, oh, it's fine. They want us to take these stuff.
They don't want to make it back.
And I, I was the last one that got left tipping.
I thought you could tell a story, instruction story.
You can tell that one.
Mike, I, I, I'm going to take the, you know, if there's anything you want to say where you can't respond, you know, this is your opportunity.
Other than we'll have personally from the middle school, specifically the way that that was, that did not have happened. Didn't have that contact.
I get to go last, so, you know. But, you know, I will say, I appreciate all the effort you guys put in on the construction part of working on story construction and trying to make the best out of that situation. But, you know, I've known you for a long time, you know. And so it's been, it's been a pleasure working on the board with you. It's dancing, you know, I think the thing that I'm proud about with the board is that we don't all agree on everything, but we work to find common ground. If you move the district forward, I think that's, that's the thing I'm proud of about this board is we've always did focus on that with the goal, which is, you know, we focus on the mission, give everything else outside. And it's like, what do we, what can we do that's best for our children's education? I think you epitomize that, and I think the community owes you a debt of gratitude for your years of service, both on the school board and, and as mayor before that. And you always were great at emceeing for state championships. You know, that was, there's also that there, so. All right. With that, we're going to move on to focus on learning. And we didn't get too sappy there because, you know, that's, that's always bad there.
Well, so four, you know, big topic areas in our strategic plan. One of them is post-secondary. And so we have a new partnership with Kirkwood Community College. We have, I would say, pretty much a full-time college and career transition coordinator stationed right at Solon to work with juniors and seniors and families. And so Kathleen is our college and career transition counselor. And I know we've kind of brought you up to speed on some of the stuff, but I wanted Kathleen to meet the board and you to meet her. And, and just, if you wanted to share with the board, kind of, I know where we want to be. You can just kind of share how you've been transitioning and some of the work that you've been doing and maybe, you know, a year from now, where we'll be.
Yeah, okay. I'll stay seated.
You bet. That's fine.
So I'm Kathleen McPhee, and I am lifelong Jackson County resident, pretty much, whether you're there, of a veteran in the University of Iowa. And the bulk of my career was spent at Kirkwood through a unique program called the Training Teacher Chief Program. And that was a program that helped specifically low income and other, low income youth that had other barriers as well to completing high school, going on to college, getting a career, getting a job. And so I did that for almost ten years, and that were my paths of life, absolutely, is helping, you know, people figure out what they want to do and where they want to go, how they're going to get there. And I have everything from, you know, doing an apprenticeship to two-year college, four-year college, whatever their path may be. I'm just excited to help them figure out what that path is going to be and dream about what their future could look like. And I, and I know that these are still young folks that may not know where they're going to be in fifty years. I'm sure that many of you probably didn't know when your high school's going to work, you were going to be in fifty years. But my goal is to, first off, they've always been told where they're going to be in August. Every year of their life, they're going to be in school, right? Every August. And so this coming August, these seniors, they don't, they're not being told where to go in August. And I want to make sure that they feel confident in knowing where they're going to be wherever that may be. So things that I was working on so far, first of all, just getting adjusted to being, being at Solon. I, most of my work previously was with Iowa City School District, also with Washington County and Iowa County, I should have those as well. And most of my work was also with more of the dropouts, DDD students, students maybe that had graduated high school and were completely lost with the COVID. So this is new for me for being in a high school setting. I really enjoy it, being able to partner with Lisa Thompson. And hopefully taking some burden off of, not burden, wrong word. Some of the current college piece off of him, so he's able to work with the students more on the mental health and social learning and stuff like that. So I've been helping with setting up college visits, really involved with all the I-CAP day planning. We're doing an I-CAP day coming up on Tuesday. Juniors are going, all juniors are going on college visits, so that's great. All of the freshmen are doing career pathway exploration. I have a Cedar Rapids at a big event. I'm in charge of the seniors, and so we're doing workshops on choosing a career, how do you choose a college, how do you take the college? Just, and I also just put out surveys to all the seniors to gauge, okay, what do you already know about the process? What have you already learned? And what else do you need from us here at the school before you go out into the real world? So I really want to know where they're at our base. So right now, I'm focusing mainly on the seniors. And then in the spring semester, I'll be focusing more on, on the juniors and still the seniors as they transition. And the most exciting part, part of my job is that I get to work during the summer time, which to me is, is great because I'm actually helping them transition than rather than May, they're done. And then, and then who do they have, you know, to support them, of course, parents, you know, but for those that maybe don't have the, quite the parental support that the others do to help with transition during the summer. And then I still get to follow up with them as college freshmen or during their first year of their apprenticeships. So this year, I definitely, I am at the school five days a week, but send this a hack day at Kirkwood for meeting with my other CCCC counterparts. And then next year, we'll kind of read, adjust that a little bit. I may be one day a week, well, there we get Kirkwood, so meeting up with Solon graduates. We're at Kirkwood. Again, I am employed by Kirkwood, but I want to be clear that I'm not just here to support Kirkwood. That I am here to guide them in whatever path they want. If they want to go to University of Iowa, Iowa State, you and I, if they'd rather go to T-Mac than Kirkwood, you know, I'm just here. I may be employed by Kirkwood, but I'm not. That's not my, my sole purpose. Oh, and my part of, part of the vision of Kirkwood is to really serve the underserved population. So it's to serve the lower income minority, huge, pretty huge slunge kids and stuff. So I will be focusing more on those, those kids that need more support, but I'm absolutely, you know, there for, for all students as well. Questions you have?
I'm glad you mentioned it. You're twelve months.
Right.
And so that's going to be a huge plus for us. You know, like you said, a senior that graduates the third week of May, they may still come back mid-June.
Yes.
For support or help or questions, and maybe not just the student, but the parents.
Yeah.
Be working with parents too.
Absolutely. Yes, yes. I'm here for parents, students, whoever.
We're super excited to have you.
Thank you.
I happen to know personally that superintendent was paying to get you here. He came after Kirkwood for a while and.
I heard that. I heard that, actually. You know that coming in, so.
Very excited for the families here to have this, even as parents, you think, you know, you know, you know, I mean, to have someone who can be an expert in the summer and the transition. And then also, just like you said, Mike can focus more on some of the social motion stuff, but he's, he's been too busy with other tasks to work on. So we're excited to come here. The best part, we'll be honest, is to hear about how things work when you come back next fall.
Yes.
And kind of go through that whole year with our seniors and juniors, and then the transition that you take with juniors and their students.
Yes, yes. And I didn't, I didn't mention that I'm also a data numbers person. I love talking with students the most. But we are also tasked with tracking all of this. It's not just like I'm just here to help. We are tracking the state and the tax stuff, tracking trend lines of post-secondary intentions, so they know how many seniors say they're going to be post-secondary. And then they know how many students actually show up for post-secondary. So a big part of my job was to close that gap. Here at Solon, it's about eighty-five percent of, about, let's say they're going to post-secondary. And then like every other school district does a slight drop down to, first one, that was seventy-seven percent last year that did show up. So there's that, there's that gap. And then also, they can closely track the data of those who continued on for the second year. And so just making sure that, that they actually follow up. So that's one data point, then another data point that they, they like to practice FASA completion. Really encouraging all families to complete the FASA because of other forms of scholarships and financial aid that are available, really, for not just the, the lower income population. So really trying to get families involved there and encouraging all students to complete the passes. They make sure they get as much money from the government as well. Any other questions or things that you would like to see?
I guess in twenty no count, how are you promoting your services? I mean, the kids obviously know, but how do we get parents engaged? Because they're the ones that have questions.
Great. So I'm in the, I'm in the newsletter that goes out once a month, adding my, you know, my information that's in there. So, and there's a little intro to me in the September newsletter. And right after that, I did get some parent emails, so there has been some, definitely. But I definitely just plan on, you know, obviously continuing to that newsletter, but also when things come up, like there's a FASA completion event or something, I'll go ahead and send out emails to the parents. But yes, that's, that's good. Hopefully with all the presence. We're hoping to maybe do something in conjunction with a parent teacher conference evening where I'm there available and some big students see me as well. And still getting out to, to meet all the students as well. So, so as students get to know me and they start talking about me, then the public parents will be comfortable talking to me as well.
I've got younger kids, but you know, you're talking about, do you have a pathway for kids to try to get like an A-A degree? Is that something that you're tasked with, or is that?
Davis? No. It's okay. Well, I am definitely helping out a lot with the Kirkwood concurrent enrollment students, the students that are enrolled in academy. All of that is, is now coming to me. So I wouldn't say that I'm going to be doing much with the upfront work of, of how that looks as far as. But I will definitely be helping with, promoting it, encouraging students to do that and the applicable. Yeah, absolutely. I think that that's wonderful. If students can graduate with an A-A, absolutely, yeah.
And so you talked about all the different places. I've had my, my two nieces have, are awesome, going off to college. The pleasure picking them down to Iowa and losing them around. And I think with both of them, I found, basically, when they meet with the academic counselors at Iowa, they ask, they answer questions about them. They start talking about, what are you planning to teach this new year? And it's, well, I've been doing this. And it's like, and I, well, you know, I've been doing this, but you know, I really, I really like to, the term, give a little bit of French instead of just Spanish. It's like, oh, you don't want to do that. It's like, you know, these things that, you know, that don't necessarily cross careers minds about, you know, go do that. But repercussions are when you go to college, it's, oh, now you've got all these other things you've got to do in the process, completes these requirements in college and so, or high school. So I guess in my mind, it's like, no, no, at least for my nieces, it was something they weren't necessarily thinking about going in. And so maybe they haven't talked to their counselors about it yet, at that point. It's, how, how do we help our kids make that, those decisions that they want? Because every university is a little bit different. I can imagine, you know, it's, it's kids are certain, some of Iowa, I would say, you and I, or, you know, Yale or Columbia. You know, there's everyone's requirements are a little bit different. How do you?
How do I figure that out? And bounce that, yeah. Well, I mean, often, I mean, the, the universities are going to be the experts on that, you know. And so, so really, hopefully I'll be able to, as I get on board more, meet with students at a younger and younger age, you know, with the profession and that's not worse than talking with them. And if they already know at that point which universities they're heading to, then absolutely. I mean, most of it's available, you know, online. They'll talk about what the, what the requirement card for each university. But I think one, one advantage of, of this, this role being affiliated with Kirkwood as well is, you know, I have direct contact and build relationships with all of the admissions counselors. I am housed in the admissions department at Kirkwood, so that's kind of an advantage that, that I have, directly to just with the Kirkwood admissions advisor. And then also because of that, I'll be able to build relationships with all the admissions advisors in, in, around the state and abroad. So hopefully I'll become, you know, just well-versed with, you know, what you need here, here, and here, and here. Yeah, definitely getting that education out of them earlier, so that they're not taking classes that are a waste, but, you know, not directly towards their path. Absolutely.
Other questions?
Great. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it.
Next up is admin reports. October eleventh, professional development.
All right, take them.
Yeah, we had an opportunity on October eleventh for a little bit of professional development differentiated. But as we kind of talk about professional learning, brought this up last, last month, I'm going to bring it up again, because I think it's really guide some of the work that we're doing across the district in terms of professional development. And that really is just this idea of closing the knowing and doing gap, which PLC process talks about, a lot of experts talk about. And something as an administrative team that's really adopted this philosophy to help guide where we're, where we're headed. So I just really want to hit on this, how important it is that we really do include job embedded professional development. It's professional development, but then we're implementing it. And then we're getting support from our instructional coaches, from other teacher leaders, principals, actually seeing Mel Holtz, intermediate school principal, job embedded professional development with a couple of our teachers and teaching alongside. And it's really helping build that confidence and confidence in regard to some of our initiatives. This idea of three to five years is really important because it can't just happen overnight. It happens over time. And we make adjustments. We look at the data. We look at how implementation is going. We survey where, you know, teachers are. And we look at where students engagement is as well. Another piece of this is the ten percent change. We really should see only about ten percent change in teacher practice in a given year. So if there are ten components in an initiative, we're likely only going to see about one that's really implemented well. We want to keep and want to build on that. And then, of course, we have the whole group, small group and individual learning opportunities for, for our teachers and engaging them that way. We want to differentiate that. The old practice was whole group, sit and get and spend a day just listening and then hope something sticks and then we'll do. That's not what we're about. We're about differentiation. And when we get into October eleventh, when I talk about that, we will see the differentiation. Professional learning should take a minimum of fifty hours, and that's not just sit and get, but job embedded, small group coaching, that's all. And then professionally, learning requires both principals and teachers. This is critical. I think there's an actual effect size out there. It says it's point eight five effect size, which is pretty significant in terms of achievement. Where, when the principal is actually gauging with teachers at the table around professional development. So this is something we've continued, we work towards. We're not perfect all the time, but I wanted to make sure I highlighted this. And probably later on down the road, when I'm asked about the question, I'll bring this up again. So just to kind of give you an idea of direction. So October eleventh, we really focused at the elementary levels, preschool through fifth grade teachers, actually should be more specific, kindergarten, fifth grade teachers, math. I did some virtual learning with Graham Fletcher, who's a national math expert, and digging into some math strategies, three act tasks, problem-based learning, math learning progression, which is huge for us right now, especially as we're exploring and pushing really where we're headed in terms of math instruction across the district. And a fine, and with that, in December, we're going to have a follow-up learning session with Graham onsite with our teachers. And he will be in classrooms modeling lessons and engaging with teachers with stu, with our students. So we're really excited about that. I think Mrs. Johnson in second grade is the most excited and I have to keep her calm when he gets here. So virtual learning with Jennifer Limp. She's a national math workshop expert, which is pedagogy we're moving towards for math. We do this in reading, and we see great results with engagement, and we want to continue this work with math. It's a little bit different, a little bit different language. If you look at your handout, there, I have kind of a, a picture of the three different models that teachers were engaged in looking at. But a lot of it is just focused on, and what is that, what are the routines that we have in place for students? Thinking about number sense. I've heard this a couple of times, that as kids get older, we've heard that kids just don't have that number sense. And so this is some of our effort of trying to address this gap for our students with number sense, number sense routines. Looking at guided math, looking at more explicit instruction, but also allowing this opportunity for kids for discoveries of, and not just pigeonholing kids into a specific algorithm or a problem of how to solve that. We're discovering more and more that kids have diverse needs and develop, and we want to look at it from a developmental level instead of did they get the right answer all the time? I think that's really, really important. And follow-up learning with Jennifer, we have her scheduled to really work with our principals and coaches to kind of help problem solve things as we're implementing and has their doing some of that job embedded support for classroom teachers, what does that look like? And being that support from Jennifer. And she's going to be back with us in the morning on February, during February PD Day to kind of extend the learning for our teachers. One grade level I didn't address on here is preschool is really focused on implementing the new pruriter resources for, on the classroom. We're really excited. Our instructional coach, our coach, modeler, the interventionist, Kat Meyer, was working with them that day as well. So, and that was differentiated for what they needed at that moment in time to continue to move our work forward. Sixth through eighth grade teachers. So we had, we spent some time talking about advanced learners. Mrs. Coons came in with actually both high school and middle school teachers and really talked about our tag program. And we're going to have Mrs. Coons join us, hopefully, either next month or the following month for a presentation of where we're trying to head with the talent gift program. But one of the big pieces we know that we need to put in place is professional development for our teachers. So they have a better understanding, not only just the program itself and the eligibility requirements, but what does it actually look like to support students with, or talented and gifted in the classroom setting, in the context, instead of just this pull, this idea of pull-out for a short amount of time during the week? We want to really focus on supporting those kids in the classroom. So she shared some information about, I think it's Gagnon's differentiated model of giftedness and talent.
Yeah.
Profiles of, really, she talked about profiles of giftedness. And then kind of talking about this idea of tag not being talented and gifted, changing this into an acronym. And we're going to use this as kind of the foundation of the work moving forward. But tag really standing for talent development for all kids. How do we develop their talent? Academic challenge, how do we support those kids who need that extra academic challenge? Who may not necessarily be gifted. But then, then what does gifted support look like? And really looking at students who are gifted as a more, as a smaller percent, because kids who are truly gifted, they're going to need something modified, something much different to push their, to push their academic, not just their academics, but everything. Then the math team at the middle school, they're piloting some new resources, illustrative math. Then the math team at the middle school, they're piloting some new resources, illustrative math, online tools. Recall, all math, all three math teachers at the middle school have actually K-12 have their own set of iPads. To really help support the blended learning efforts that we have in place. And so we're exploring this online tool through illustrative math, LearnZillion is the vendor to kind of help us. Take a look how we can engage students in that blended learning environment, again, right now, it's just kind of a pilot that we're trying out to see what works and how it can break some classroom. Personal planning, and then actually both high school and middle school have just an opportunity for some time, or personal planning, collaboration, time, just flexibility. Teachers have been working their tails off and covering for each other during the first quarter due to sub shortage. And so we really want to honor their time and give them some time just to do some planning prep, whatever they needed to just kind of get focused. And then middle school behavior code, grade level teams, students support discussions.
That was, that piggybacked off some Thursday afternoon P D that we had earlier in the year. So it was nice to be able to break off into grade level teams and dive deep into some of those really unique situations that we have. Students have caused the greatest number of challenges and the greatest intensity of challenges to give them some time to plan.
At high school, just touch base on portion of graduate work indicators reviews that we talked about previously. We're narrowing down what those indicators are going to be, and we're going to begin doing some work with focus groups and including some members from S I A C as well as other parents. K-12, we're able to gather student feedback, I think from every high schooler, student feedback, an opportunity to engage in that process, so. And we've found some really, some themes that have really started to stand out to us, and we want to make sure to bring those votes and see where. And then, again, personal planning collaboration, and then they have an opportunity to dig into the I S C A planning and calibration. For this upcoming October 6th, and then they also had a tack for just collaborative learning teams to get back at their goals and priorities of.
You can see, we made the most of it. Yeah, it was a good day.
And then the last page there is just some ongoing professional development. Again, coming back to that first page, it's a three to five year process, it's ongoing, it's narrow focuses, yes, we have a lot of things going on. That impact different pockets of teachers and grade levels and spans, but this is just, I wanted to provide this to you so you can take a look at. On top of October 11th, we continue to really push ourselves and recognizing too that we do have a lot on the plate, but. Trying to listen to what the teachers are, have to say, and gathering that feedback, but also knowing that. Pushing forward one step in front of the other, and we're making some incredible progress with all of our. I don't know if that was challenges.
I mean, celebration, it could actually take us to a celebration too, you know, we've had a strong literacy focus, but, you know, elementary two and. And, you know, when we talk about planning three or five years down the road. Planning is not just about identifying maybe outside experts like Josh has done to come in, it's not just about where do we go. But it's also about planning for, okay, if we're going to go this route, what are we going to need for resources? And so it's budgeting two to three years down the road also. So for instance, as we have gotten to the point in our K-5 elementary classrooms, and our teachers have really grown and really established that workshop model for readings. So now we're at a point, how do we now start integrating science into that literacy workshop model? I mean, our kids, we have saturated our classrooms with text at all levels, so if I'm a first grade student. If I'm reading at the fifth grade level, I've got books in there of high interest to read, or if I'm still reading at the kindergarten level, there's books in there for me to read successfully independently. Well, it's also just as important in half our day, 50% of our reading about should be nonfiction. And so. Josh and I have been, you know, budgeting for this, and we've got what, fourth and fifth grader pilot team? That what I'm going to call pioneering, because others will follow, but they're going to work ahead. Identifying, you know, the science standards of lining notes what we teach in fourth and fifth grade. And they're going to integrate some of that into their literacy block, so they, and, and we are. Within the next public, well, maybe by the next board meeting, have about $50,000 worth of nonfiction text to support that initiative. So if the topic is weather in fourth grade, now I don't know if that is or not, probably not, but if it's weather, then we're going to, we're going to be able to put. A large volume of nonfiction text about whether, probably depending on what the teachers. Tell us, reading ability, reading levels from second or third grade all the way to maybe sixth or seventh grade. And that way, when we're in that literacy block, kids can read nonfiction text, and they can build background knowledge to where, when we do go to science. We can go right into inquiry, hands on, things like that, because we built background knowledge by incorporating that into our literacy block. So we're going to be reading fiction, nonfiction, we're really going to make the most of that, so. I mean, that's, that's where that three to five years, it's not only about. What's the next step to grow achievement, but it's also about within those next steps, what? What do we need to equip our teachers with professionally to learn, and then what resources and supports do we need to provide them for them to be most successful? Because if they're successful, achievement increases. And so, I mean, we're excited about being beat in a position to where we can fund these initiatives so that they're highly successful. Sorry.
Any questions going to you?
I think about, go back to where we started. Thinking about today.
These are a lot different things.
Yes.
You've already started on January.
Yeah, it's already. It's really, I mean, a lot of the work goes. It's done by the principals or leadership teams, coaches. I, I kind of, I kind of prepared one, here's kind of where we're headed. There are some individual things, differentiated things in each building that they want to focus on, which you can see in for October 11th, but then there's some big things. Especially if we're looking at some expertise, we need somebody who has that knowledge, that takes, I'm planning months ahead. And then looking ahead, so like already for, for the 22, 23 school year, I'm going to start looking at it in November and December and start thinking about what. Kind of crafting and drafting, what that might look like, while keeping an eye on where are we now? So that we can make adjustments, and I'm kind of, we're constantly making adjustments all the way up to that date to make sure, are we hitting, are we hitting the nail on the head that we need to hit? And not just saying, yep, this is what it's going to be, and this is how it's going to be, and done, it's, it's conversations at the admin table. There are some opportunities with principals and coaches where we're coming together, meeting and talking about, okay, what's the next step, where do we need to head? Is it something we can handle? And if it's not, and we're not ready, and we're not quite confident and competent yet, competent yet with that. All right, let's find somebody, an outside expert, who's not going to cost us $20,000 to bring in, but who's reasonable and who has some great knowledge and is respected in the field. That's, that's one of the things, we bring in, I think, some pretty high quality. Experts, so, but yes, long story short, takes a lot of time and months ahead, but a lot of collaboration back and forth, we think. What's our next step as we think of our goals? Well, next one coming up, January 17th, I'm super excited about, we have P L C experts from Solution Tree coming in, two of the top of the field. I was surprised we actually got them. Pretty busy. Tim Brown, Tim Brown. But he is a pretty dynamic speaker. But we'll bring, we'll bring a lot of energy, especially in January, that's, I was really excited to hear, because he has a lot of background knowledge of P L Cs. School improvement, and will be able to bring some excitement, and then the other person is Cassie Urbans from Solution Tree, and one of our focus areas for C L T or P L Cs. Is that next run of really digging in for assessment, a common form of assessment, you know, that middle school, we talked a lot about that, what's that, what's that look like when we're really designing and implementing assessments as well?
You know, a few years ago, when we brought that group of teachers in, I think like 25, around 25 down to St. Louis, St. Charles for that big P L C conference. And we did this several years, they'd come back and kind of share out their learning, their highlights. Many of them, and I know it's been three years, it's a pandemic storm, it's all two years, two years. Many of them were referencing sessions from Tim Brown. And, and I know as a board, he said, well, gosh, 25 people are disasociated, is there any way we can bring the conference to soul? They were just kind of pulled off part there, and so.
A lot of stuff we want to cover already. The update on how things are going.
No, we, did we, we picked up two or three, you know, we increased the rate from 110 to 130. If a sub does a day, if a sub does 10 consecutive days, it goes up to 180. We picked up a couple more that way, but we are, we are adjusting what we do, for instance, we were just talking about this the other day, when we introduced. Writer's workshop. It, it was a big undertaking. Not, not an easy thing to implement, and so when we did that, we, we would bring in five subs a day. To relieve or go into a whole grade level. So that that grade level, we could, we could take them out of the classrooms during school day and give them prep and planning time or development time. So that we can do this work during the contractual time. Well, that proved to be a great strategy. And it's not anything we can do now, we don't have that, so, you know, we're adjusting. Like Josh said, maybe slowing some things down because we just can't pour the resources into the support for teachers, that's one of them. We picked up a few, but like we said before, they're really not out there. They're really not out there, so that continues to be a challenge, so we are making adjustments on. Time, my last time, yeah, we are.
Sounds good. Next up is board pretty updates, a lot of the things we have to touch on. Senate agenda, anything that we can pull out, if not all, if there's a motion. So, motion by Alaska to approve, second by Coon. All those in favor, signify by saying not. I oppose, abstain. One extension 401. Action items, modify a law of growth for special education deficit. It's that end of the year, we'll see how much we spend, more than what the state gave us to do special education, and we ask for the spending authority of that. But not the money, so, so. Those years, remember when we started this off, this, shouldn't say started off, this, this number has been.
As high as 600,000.
Over half a million dollars. There's been some strategies that allow us to be more efficient, more effective, and so we're seeing progress, especially with, with the smaller deficits, I think we're all. Happy to see that progress, that focus. And so I guess at this point in time, I've been in motion to approve the request.
You want to flip back to the agenda we're doing? There we go. There you go.
So it's just going to be a motion to request.
Special education deficit, the plus would be 207,718 dollars and five cents.
Motion by Alaska. Second by Wolf, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying hi. Hi. Thank, motion carries unanimously. Next up is the student school board representative. Fine, no.
Okay, well, we're going to have a student, I, go ahead. I will explain that, I will show you how you introduce, introduce our representatives, but that's okay, so as. Hillary would do stand.
She's graciously applied for the position, yes, she met with the board leadership team a couple of weeks ago. Time runs together, for me, it's like, it could have been a day ago, it could have been a month ago at this point in time. Got a good set down for about 20, 25 minutes, had a good discussion, kind of about the vision for the position, to provide that student voice upon the board, things that are affecting us. She's going to be, she's, she is the pioneer in this area for us because she's going to lead the way and kind of set the position up in terms of how it can effectively work. And then she's going to train her replacement next year, during the year, and so a year from now will be a spot where they'll point these, the next. And Hillary will help us with that transition, so she'll go through some of the new board orientation that we go through in November. And assemble with the new board members, she will have the opportunity to go down to I S B with us, if the council is scheduled. We're still working through those details. Just thinking about tonight, I thought about.
Hillary taking the walls for the.
I would say, when we talk about the current topics, like, that would have been a great time, you know, I was just saying, right, I decided I was not going to serve at the Wolves and. Call her, call her unexpected without not being prepared for what we're going to talk about tonight, so, you know, those are the sort of things where we have a different perspective. When we talk about the professional development, I think she'll have those be opportunities to ask questions about, you know. But that connection, that connection to student learning, these are the things we're seeing, how does that connect to what we're seeing in the classroom in this area of that? As related to literacy or talent and gifted, and so I'm really looking forward to that, that role being on the board. It's been, it's been growing in Iowa, there's a lot of sense, some, some states have a requirement that every school district in the state has to have a student representative on board. I think she's going to do a great job, and so. First of all, we have to approve her, and then we can give her a round of applause for that, so. I would entertain a motion to approve Hillary Wilson as the student school board representative for the 2022 calendar year. So motion by Coon. Second, second by Alaska. All those, any discussion? Jamie looks like she wants to say something. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose, motion carries unanimously.
I'm just really excited to have you here and a new perspective on everything that we talk about, so I'm really looking forward to having you here with us.
And just for you to know, we are here for you.
Yes.
So don't be afraid to say whatever you want. That's, I mean, presumably, should I say that? Say it.
Yes.
Okay, because we want it all. Okay. Next up on the agenda is the November 8th. As we noted. Year slash month falls, the 18th day of Iowa Association of School Boards. We're currently scheduled to meet at 5:30. Talked about signing that back tomorrow, folks to go to that and come back, we skipped the last keynote and then. Christmas weekend back. Six thirty, so basically, then now. It's, yeah, that's, that's the word. Uh, that's the question. So.
I'm good with that.
Unless, unless we. Unless we do something, it's not.
I think at nine, nine thirty.
That works.
And then we'll, remember, we'll have the short meeting to kind of finish up everything from the old board and then we'll have.
The new board.
Just a little longer, but you'll only have to be here.
That's.
Thirty minutes times.
Yeah, I know, there's, there's this long tradition of, uh, people going out to dinner. I guess every time, every time someone, uh, leaves the board. There's this dinner, well, I can't stay, we're going out to dinner. Because we always invite them to stay. I said, I gotta meet so-and-so for dinner. So, um.
So when's the last session? Is this sort of?
I think, I think the closing honorary session starts at four. So I think, I think there's lunch and then there's a session, like there's two sessions, one thirty or two. Hey, what, the last session is at three forty-five. Okay.
Go back into general section for the closing comments. I've never been that long, but.
This is one step.
We kind of like football and so.
Um, yeah, so, but yeah, I, I think, uh, we can double, we can double check it, but, um. Let's make sure. I think that before.
Is it four or even? Six o'clock.
Well, it's, it's just, we have the election of the board office. That's, it's. I think we're.
There's no chance of football.
No, they're, they're like Saturday.
Right into that one.
Yeah, sure makes. Nice that you don't have to. Have a one-thirty game and decide who's released and who's not.
No.
So Thursday, it looks like. It looks like this year there's only. One afternoon session. So the final, final. Session ends, starts at three.
Ends at three?
Ends at. The, the, the closing honorary session starts at, starts at so far. So we could, you know. So we could, we could.
Yeah.
So instead of the six o'clock instead of like. There's so many, so much.
I'll make a motion to move the November eighteen, uh, school board meeting to six P M.
Second.
Motion by Alaska, second by Wolf, uh, to move the, uh, start time for the. November meeting, uh, six P M to accommodate, uh, travel back from the morning. In session. Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Next up on the agenda. Is. The nutrition department wants to purchase.
You know, Becky does a great job managing that program and, and, uh, it's. Its own fund. And it's built. Well, S, Esser is really built for program up to along with relationships management. We've got money that we need to spend and she's going to take this opportunity to replace some aging equipment. In the high school and this is. A purchase that she wants to make. Uh, replace another.
We have to give bits for this. Our bits, our bits.
Yeah.
There are, there are bits, a few minutes of cash.
Yeah.
Uh, they won with thirty-four and none of them was forty.
This is the lower, yeah.
Good, that will include the repair of the tickets.
Oh, yeah.
Basically, they're.
Um, yeah, so yeah, it's thirty-eight, forty-eight, this puts you in itself, um. Is there?
I'll make a motion to approve the. Uh, purchase for thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars.
Motion by Alaska, second by Coons. Any discussion on that? I think she, as you said, they definitely, it's a good investment, um. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. That motion carries unanimously. Yeah, that is very true. Um. The next up on our agenda is. The annual progress report.
Yeah, just, just quickly, um. You have a kind of a, a condensed abbreviated version of our APR. These are just metrics that we, we take every year. And then we report out annually. We, one year, were a little more elaborate. And we actually mailed it to all residents and it was thousands of dollars. And we thought, there's probably a better way to disperse this. And so then we went to, um, kind of condensing it and putting it into no joke code the last three or four years. And, um. Slipping into programs, either football or basketball games. And, um, without the no joke code, we couldn't be economists this year. And, um, I believe we've also posted it on our, on our webpage too. So this is just kind of for the twenty-one. Uh, fiscal year. And then, you know, I put our APR with it or our strategic plan. Which really reflects our, our goals, our priorities and goals. And one thing that our CIAP was, um. Um, in fact, we have a CIAP member in here that was adamant about metrics. We do have some metrics in here that, um, this, these metrics will be included in future APR reports. Um, so. You can, you, you know, this has our beliefs and the four areas that we're focused on with metrics and, and just kind of the priority areas and how we get there. So. That's kind of a quick summary of our annual progress report and, um, some data from the fiscal trend.
Questions? Their policies, this original, they have a requirement statement to. Uh, make this stuff readily available. I, before that, it all kind of. I, at the Department of Education, when they. They wanted to, they said, we need to do a better job of sharing how, how we do, I mean, just like goals, uh, to the community. And so. Uh, I think it's important to get that out there. It's, it's always a, a challenge to. How do you, how do you hit everyone? You know, no joke code is good because it can mail to everybody, everybody in the district. But without those no joke code, we're less, we're back, uh, trying to, how to maximize, uh. Maximize books. And then, and then we're going to drop some copies off to the libraries and all, I don't know.
We place them around some of the businesses, yeah.
Are we putting in, uh, like. Play programs, music programs too, or not?
No, that's a good idea. With that coming up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's all, we've been passing, it was like football, they're winning the ba- basketball, kind of, you know.
Yep.
For the big draws, we, we've got lots of bodies going through.
But we should.
The musical.
Six hundred per night. Yeah. One other item too that I didn't mention earlier is, um. We had our audit. Uh, weeks ago and.
Since, that was, that was going to be, that was going to be my talking.
Well, then, but I'll leave it. I'll leave it.
We're supposed to only talk about the things we talked about earlier.
Right.
You guys always talk about.
I'm going to say, I got it now.
So he has nothing to talk about. You guys always talk about everything I'm going to talk about. I got to talk about, I got to talk about the things that, uh.
Okay, well, that's right. So.
Do we have more work tonight or is it just what they want to stick in?
We are, we're, we're.
We all have.
I do need to get your picture though, because Rick, that's why we kind of wanted to celebrate him. Usually it always seems like a slip out thing, but we need a full picture of who that's one we work to. Too much harder work to not.
Our participation trouble.
Yeah.
We can go down there though.
But you can be there, yeah. Yeah.
No, because Jim will watch super. So, okay, with that. We'll be playing board learning in November, so we'll spend all the time there.
That, that, that's just stuff.
And we'll also, we'll also look towards, we'll also look towards the, uh. The half-day board learning, uh, with the admin team. The next one, we'll talk about dates for that. We'll always have to look around and get a schedule for that. But.
You think that, that would be after the first year?
Yes. It's generally been in January, so, um. And, um.
Right. He retired.
He retired.
I mean, he retired.
I was on my ass, he's been, and he's like, well, this is my last one. I'm like, what do you mean to the last one? Um, and so, yeah. He said he may come anyway and visit, but he won't, he won't be leaving the train. So, um. So.
It gives her the opportunity to look at possible different goals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know.
Yep.
For the board.
Yeah. Sounds good. Uh, with that, uh, talking points, uh, Jamie.
Um. There's a lot of great things today. I think Kathleen being here and what she's going to be doing for our students at the high school is really a. Huge step in, in a good direction for us. Especially since she is focused on kind of the other kids. Um, because those are always the ones that I'm. Kind of looking out for and, and want more for those kids to kind of pull, pull them up and show them that there is. A lot of opportunities out there for them that maybe they haven't been thinking about. So I'm really excited that, that she's here and I can appreciate the progress that's made. Um, with her being here with the kids, so.
Right, yeah, um. As Jamie said, it's a lot of good stuff. As Earl says, this is just amazing stuff. But I think, I think professional, Josh, I mean, just the volume of time that you're spending on this and the quality of information you're bringing to the staff, I. Chris sent me notes today, I have to kind of reflect a little bit on. My issues and as I said here tonight, even I'm thinking about the level of education. That we provide our students and where that's gone, even since my kids got them. I mean, let alone eighty-four or eighty-seven, you know, this is a whole different school than what it was years ago, but even in the last ten years. How far we've come in, in what we do for our kids and the quality that we provide them and that they'll leave here with. This is tremendous. And so, you know, hats off to you and everybody that's engaged in this, the teachers buying in and doing what they can do to help continue to build all of that. Great. The literacy thing, David's mentioned, this is tremendous stuff. The rumblings that there's apparent problems here is absurd. And we're hearing that, saying those things in the streets. It's not true. It's not part of the thing. So.
And, well, I think, and I'm just going to, are we, a lot of trees. Trees by teachers.
Yeah.
To learn and teach our students. That's totally different than what was for you last time. Teachers, I remember that council came back, we started the PLCs. Where now, where that started. Uh, in a lot of. Opportunities that we're doing. And then also the horizons and you can see our next steps coming. Just, uh. It's just an exciting time, uh. A lot of people. Never come to these things. Never hear this thing. It's first in heart, it's knowing. Like you said. It's just getting to the nice thing. You know, I mean, it's just amazing what it gets from you. So I appreciate it.
Well, maybe that's why it's important to flip this out. Every so often, you can put it in people's faces, so, kind of what's going on, because you're right, you can talk. As much as you want, people are here. Uh, Hillary's going to be great. I think that's awesome. I want to choose her. Uh, just to get her engaged and get a little bit of insight of what the students are seeing. So, um, I'm excited to be there.
I can't, since we told her she didn't have to come, you know, then, you know. Kick off next month from her training. So, okay, she, she made the effort to come. So I'm happy that Hillary was doing the step up in that role. I think she's did a great job. My, my just talking point is where I got the. Home office, okay, you know, honestly, um, so, yeah, so. She had a lot of practice. I think you're just, you know, my talking point is, you know. There's a lot of work that goes into preparing for them on it. And I want to thank Pat for all of her hard work and getting that ready. Uh, you know. But we all know she does a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure we stand straight and narrow. We had, you know, tonight we have the. Special education, uh, faculty to cover and such, that's used for us. We get, we get the one or two quotes and we're back on the issue. So I, I think, you know, that's kind of why I want to, I mean, obviously. Which is, well, so that's segregation duty is like ninety-nine point nine percent of all districts in the state. And so, you know, that's, that's the, that's the thing again, it's just. It's just not the bodies and districts in Iowa to, to spread out her responsibility, obviously, for people to touch multiple things, so.
Tim, I think when, when she sat down, the auditor sat down with this, I mean, she gave us the sheet, she said, well, here you go. It's all I can come up with. It was the segregation of duty and she said, you know. It would, a district your size, you would probably have to have seven more employees in central office.
For it.
For it not to be identified as, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I think we almost take that audit now for granted because that's really the only thing that they've ever found. The volume of time that she spent on that. And she was covering. Yeah, she was. Lot going on, yeah.
And there's been a lot of it because of that. I mean, there've been small, and, and there's always correct, but that's. Three or four years ago, you know, over the summer, there was a check last year in the state in one of the buildings, you know, and then said, well, how do we cut, you know. How do we process to make sure, to make sure this is kept for the summer that the. At the, to make sure those, the second office. You know, there, there's, there's always little things that pop up every once in a while that you caught up, like, you know. Uh, I just appreciate you proactive and working with, making sure that we, uh. Don't have things to repeat. Um, our next regular board meeting is November eighteen, twenty-nine, one, at six P M in this room. With that, I will entertain a motion to.
I think I get to do this.
No.
I'll make a.
First, the other guy. Second by Coon, so adjourned. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.